Am I ready?
No, I need one more.
You tell me when I'm ready.
Almost mayor, I have to log on again. Okay, you're ready.
The city council LRA board meeting for the city of Riverbank is now in session. Today is September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, the time is six P M.
This meeting is being recorded.
This meeting is being recorded. This in-person and virtual hybrid meeting will be held in accordance with the governor's executive order, November dash twenty-nine dash twenty, as amended by November dash zero-eight dash twenty-one regarding the open meeting requirements of the Ralph and Brown Act, the Federal Americans with Disability Act, and also with the governor's reopening orders, June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. The California Department of Public Health COVID guidance and the recent Stanislaus County Health Officers mandatory face covering order, September second, two thousand and twenty-one. This is to ensure public continues to have safe access to participate in meetings. Refer to the last page of the agenda for participation information. If we all will rise for the flag salute.
I put a allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Let us pray. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and for the opportunity for this leadership to serve the people of our city. Help each to act with character and conviction. Help them to listen with an understanding and goodwill. Help each to speak with clarity and resistance. Give them a spirit of service. Remind each that we are stewards of your authority. Guide them to be the leaders your people need. Help them see the humility and dignity in those who disagree with them and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creator deserves. And finally, Father, renew each with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your leaders are confident in your goodness and love. Dear Lord, I pray that you guide each and every one, always satisfy the needs that need to be met this day. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Can we also take a moment for the thirteen? Thank you, please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council authority members, District Two Rachel Hernandez, here. District Three Cal Campbell.
Here.
District Four Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Luis Uribe.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here.
There'll be no change to the agenda. Conflict of interest, any council authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare the conflict at this time. Seeing none or hearing none, we move on to public comment. Please refer to the last page of this agenda for the public comment procedures via Zoom. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council LRA board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes and time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state laws, matters presented during public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. Do we have any public comments?
Mayor, there is no one online wishing to speak at this time.
Very well, any written comments?
None received by staff.
Okay. Thank you. Proceeding to item eight point one, we're going to do it from here, Cal.
Okay, that's fine.
All right. The Historical Society has possession of the Andrew Carnegie Old Library, and it's the one hundredth year. The City of Riverbank Proclamation Historical Museum, one hundredth year anniversary. Whereas in nineteen twenty-one, Andrew Carnegie and with matching funds from citizens of Riverbank funded the construction of a library at thirty-two thirty-seven Santa Fe Street. Whereas to this day, the building remains one of the few remaining Andrew Carnegie-funded buildings regionally and is sole building within Riverbank currently listed on the National Registry of Historic Places. Whereas the library continued in operation until approximately nineteen seventy-five, after that time, the building was gifted to the city of Riverbank. Whereas the building became operational as a museum in nineteen ninety-four, since then it has been continuously operated and curated by the Riverbank Historical Society. Whereas the museum serves as a key asset to the city and provides a critically important service to the Riverbank community. Whereas the city of Riverbank appreciates the tireless effort of many volunteers and citizens who have dedicated their time to making the museum a source of Riverbank history for the community. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the city council of the city of Riverbank does hereby unanimously proclaim this appreciation and congratulations to the Riverbank Museum on its one hundredth year anniversary. Signed today, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. There you go, Cal.
Thank you, Mayor, for the recognition to the association. I'm sure that they are quite well get it, so we're very pleased to have this. Thank you very much.
I'd like to have the Historical Society include the history of this entire region. Prior to the Europeans intrusion, the Yokuts were a very proud, family-oriented, land-owning Indians who were systematically eliminated by both the Mexican government and the California government, to where from seventy thousand to approximately seven hundred survived, there's only a couple hundred left.
We do have some materials and books on some of those things, and we'll try to gather more.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to proceed to item eight point two, the two thousand and twenty-one Cheese and Wine Festival update.
Thank you, Mayor. We have both our new festival coordinator and our Parks and Rec director here this evening, and I think Sue, do you want to introduce and set the table?
Mayor, members of the council, tonight we'd like to give you an update on the community about how the planning for the Cheese and Wine Festival is going. It's just a few weeks away, it'll be October ninth and tenth this year. And Tamara Spade with Simply Divine Events, which is the company that we are contracting with this year, has been working very hard on the event, and she is here to give you an update, a short PowerPoint, on just how the planning is going and what to expect in the next few weeks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Tamara, and I did a slide presentation, so we can kind of go through that and then talk about, I guess, answer any questions that you might have at the end. So we can go ahead and go to the next slide. So you probably can't really see that, it was hard to put on the presentation, but we're going to stick with doing the same, going down Santa Fe from First all the way to Fourth Street. We're going to continue after the fencing at Fourth, where there'll be an entrance to doing a car show, and that will be between Fourth and Fifth Street. And so we are bringing back the car show this year, and we've had a really good response. People seem to be very excited about that and getting applications in every day. We will have three entrances this year. They will be one, actually, one on each end of Third Street and then the one over at the Fourth Street. And at each exit, actually, we'll get to security, but there'll be security at each exit. Next slide. Budget. So I didn't put any numbers up there because the revenue, when we budgeted this, and we'll talk about that in risk, but when we did the budget, we did not do it during the pandemic. And obviously, everything has changed with the budget. So we are trying to maybe cut some expenses and trying to stay within budget, but it's been very interesting doing a festival during the pandemic because of resources, lack of resources, increase in inflation, you know, things like that, and just trying to even get products. I mean, wine glasses has been, I guess there's a glass shortage. So it's been very interesting, but we are working through it and so far, so good, but it has been a little difficult. So, you know, for our revenue, we're basing that on our vendor fees, beer sales, ticket sales, and sponsorships. And our sponsorships have been doing quite well. I think that, you know, we've gotten back some sponsors from the past. We've also gotten some new sponsors this year, so we're doing okay on sponsorships. And then, like I said, with inflation and stuff, expenses, equipment, you know, things like that, everything's gone up a little more than what was expected. Next slide. Advertising. So we are trying to do a lot of advertising, print media. We'll be looking at the newspapers. There was some articles that were done early on. And then social media, you know, we're trying to hit that all the time. Humulus Radio Station, we're going to be on all six of their radio stations and also doing social media with them and some digital marketing. And they will be out here on site, in person, during the festival. And then we're also working on banners for our sponsorships, posters. We have put posters some downtown here. We've gone over to the new area where Save Mart and those stores are in La Peria and put posters up over there, too. So. Next slide. So some of our festival highlights is live entertainment. We have three stages and, yeah, the main stage, we've gotten four bands. The Sunday stage, three bands, and community stage will be going all day. We also have vendors. They are, we're doing pretty good on vendors. Like I said, all of a sudden, everybody wants to wait till last minute, so, you know, I'm receiving probably ten phone calls a day wanting to know if they can still get in, which is a good thing. Kid's Zone, that is going to be located between First and Second Street. I think that's where it's been in the past. And then our Hispanic Cultural Day, we're going to still have the dancing horses. That will be done with awards. I guess it's a competition, and I was asked if the mayor was going to be doing the awards again, so we are hoping that you will be. And we'll be doing that, and then some folkloric dancers and some bands. So we will still have the Hispanic cultural area, and I think that's been definitely a big hit. People are asking, so, next slide. This is the car show that we are bringing back, and like I said, that's going to be done between Fourth and Fifth Street, and that is the Wine and Vibes Car Show, and people are excited. The first fifty that enter will get their goodie bags and name plaques, and we'll also be doing awards. We're finding sponsors for the awards, and then they'll be able to pick their car and issue the award at the end. That is only going to be one day. We're doing that on Saturday from ten to four. Next slide. And then this is something new. We wanted to kind of kick off the festival with the Cheese and Wine Dinner, excuse me. And that's going to be out here on the plaza in the evening under the stars, and it's a five-course meal with wine and the institute, Culinary Institute in Medesto is going to be coming out and doing the dinner and putting it together, and they are actually volunteering their time to do this, and their students will be doing this. And so I'm hoping it's going to be a fun evening. We're going to have live band out here with music, and like I said, it'll just be a fun evening of getting together and kind of kicking off the festival. Next slide. Our Wine and Cheese tasting area, we do have a brewery that's coming in. They're brand new, and I think they're also coming into, eventually into Riverbank, is that correct? Yeah. So I got confirmation from them. And then Saturday, what I did, it's a little different than the past years where there's been just an open session from one to four. We broke it down into three sessions on Saturday. We did this, so it was not a drinking fest. We wanted to make sure that it was a tasting. People came in, they were able to taste wine and cheese and beer if they choose to. We're also going to have olive oil in there, and, you know, just, I guess, just to make it fun, but not an opportunity to sit there and drink for four or five hours. And so we have an hour in between each session, so we can clean up and make sure everything is ready to go for the next session. And, yeah, so that's why we broke it down into sessions. And we're doing the same thing on Sunday. We wanted to make sure that we quit an hour before closing is the reason we only have two on Sunday, because our times are a little bit shorter. Security, you know, October eighth, I do have one guard out here during the Wine Dinner, and then on the ninth, I have eleven guards will be on duty, two at each entrance and then one at the very end of First Street. We wanted to make sure we had a car there in case the fire department needed to come through, they could just move the car and allow them to come through. So there will be one person stationed there with a car on October, I was supposed to say October, October ninth, after hours, we do have two guards that will be roaming back and forth within the fenced area. Next slide. So Sunday, October tenth, we also have eleven security officers that will be on duty, ten A M. to seven P M. We kept it an hour to make sure everybody was out, and then two guards at the Wine and Cheese Tasting, nine covering the festival. I don't know why it says that, but, and then the security officers at each entrance gates will have wands, so they'll be wanding people, will be checking anything that they're bringing in. We are not allowing backpacks in this year. And, yeah. Setup and take down. So street markings for vendors, that will go on, starting on Monday that week, and then parking signs will go out on the eighth, street closures will start happening and fencing's going in on the eighth. And then that way, everything will be fenced in when the dinner happens, too, because there will be alcohol served and a guard on duty. So we wanted to make sure that we were following security. And then, you know, some of the risks that I mentioned in the beginning, obviously, planning this festival during a pandemic, we have to worry about COVID-nineteen. And so, you know, with Stanislaus County, I don't think that masks are mandated for outside events, but recommended. So we will be having signs out there for that, and, you know, unless anything changes between now and then. And then, you know, again, reduced resources and then inflation is definitely affecting the festival. So, next slide. And that's it. So, you know, I do want to say that I want to thank all of you for giving me this opportunity to do the festival this year and also working with Sue and Parks and Recreation and the Sheriff's Department and the Fire Department has been amazing. Everybody has been so accommodating and great to work with. Also, the businesses downtown and meeting with them, and so, you know, I think it's just so far, so good, but I really enjoyed it, so thank you for that.
We'll give you our welcome, your welcome, on the fourteenth, after we've done a deep pre-party.
After, okay.
One of the things I'd like you to publish, last year, when we did, on the last one we did while doing wanding, there were some that were bringing in weapons and did not want to relinquish them. I would like to have that type of information put out. I'm sure we had already done that, but I want to make sure that it is well-publicized so we don't have any disruptions at the entrance.
Okay. Yes, and working with the Sheriff's Department and John, yeah, he's sent me the recommendations for signage and things like that, but we'll make sure that we try to get that out in advance.
Thank you.
Yes.
Comment?
I had a question. So the, thank you for your presentation, really appreciate it. The dinner, is there a cost and is it open to the public?
So there is a cost, and it is open to the public. It is seventy-five dollars. And all of you, I haven't done it yet, but I will be sending out invitations to you guys individually, and you guys are all invited as a guest to the dinner. So you'll be receiving those, yeah.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, one of the things I just wanted to thank Miss Spade for is, one of the things we really wanted from a staff level, kind of moving into a new promoter, was to have a little bit more involvement with the downtown businesses and sort of focus a little bit more on some of those relationships that, you know, events are tough and people get frustrated and change is hard, and so we kind of felt like a little bit of pre-work would avoid some of that, and she's done a really great job connecting with those folks, forging new relationships that we've had some trouble with in the past. And so we're pretty excited. I think that, you know, Sue and I were actually talking about it right before the meeting, that, you know, I think we all need to be, the community in particular, one thing I've learned about Wine and Cheese over the years has been that it means a little something different to everybody else, and some people are happy with changes and others aren't. But I think that just, we're coming off of a year where we didn't do it because of the pandemic, and we're moving into sort of a new phase of this event that hopefully will grow every year under her direction. And so just to be patient that that may take a year or two, and we'll figure out what works and what doesn't work and capitalize on that. But I've really appreciated it so far, so I just want to add that. Thank you.
So Tamara, very well put together, and I totally, I was going to actually echo some of the sentiments that Sean said as far as meeting with the downtown groups and building those relationships. That's super key, especially if it's happening right in front of their businesses and stuff like that. It kind of seems like all sectors are being hit with this shortage, everybody I talked to, so totally understand where you're coming from, even with those challenges, appreciate all the hard work you're doing. One question I had, I did have the old sponsor, Chris Ricky, reach out to me. We're kind of wondering if we can get the website updated, or it's not showing that.
Yeah, we just talked about the sponsor page and getting that all updated. I didn't realize he was still on there, so that will be changed by tomorrow morning.
I only bring it up because it was, you know, they actually asked me directly.
Yeah.
Yeah, so other than that, I look forward to it. I was asked to judge the dancing horses, so I look forward to doing that, so.
Well, good.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, real quick, I like the idea of the sessions for the tastings for this year. Is it the first time we're doing something like that?
No.
Yeah, I think they used to do it way back, and then it changed at some point, so we're kind of going back to the way it was done.
I've seen them without sessions, I'm looking forward to that. Just about the digital media and ads, is it going to be bilingual?
You know what, it's, we should, yes, and to answer your question, we will do that. Yeah, I think that's very important.
Thank you.
Okay, I liked your presentation very well, and I just want to have a safe event, and we'll keep our eyes open so that we have that, and I like the idea that the mayor has about not having the weapons in, they shouldn't be there at all, and we look forward to working with you and having a great festival.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, not only for this year, but for the future.
Thank you very much.
We move forward to item nine, consistent with item nine point one, wave readings, item nine point two, a resolution authorizing the approval of a subrecipient agreement between the City of Riverbank and the County of Stanislaus for the Community Development Block Grant Program for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-two. Item nine point three, award bid for the Patterson Road at First Street Project to Dirt Synergy, Inc., and authorize execution of future change orders. Item nine four, a resolution providing the city manager or their designee signature authority for the submittal of the application for funding to the State Water Board Community Water System COVID Relief Program. Item nine point five, a resolution authorizing the allocation of funds to update the park and recreation component of the city system development fees and authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional services between Willdan Financial Services and the City of Riverbank to conduct the study. Item nine point six, a resolution to award a contract for the solid waste rate study to Bottle Wells Associates, authorize the city manager to execute the contract and authorize a budget appropriation in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars from the General Reserve Fund for said contract. Is there anyone wishing to pool or talk about any of the items? Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on any of these consent items?
There is no one online wishing to speak, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I bring it back to the council for consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar stated.
That motion?
We have a motion to approve the vice mayor and a second by council member Campbell. Roll call, please.
Council authority member Hernandez? Yes. Campbell?
Yes.
Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Uribe?
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item ten, public hearing. Just for information, this public hearing was published in the Riverbank News on November, I mean, September first, two thousand and twenty-one, for the items ten point, and for the items ten point two, ten point three alpha. Item ten point one, public hearing to adopt resolution of the city council of the City of Riverbank annexing of territories to the Community Facility District, authorizing the levy of a special tax and submitting levy of tax to qualified electors, City of Riverbank Community Facility District number two thousand and sixty-six. City of Riverbank Community Facility District number twenty sixteen dash one, Public Services Annexation Number One. And a resolution of the city council of the City of Riverbank declaring results of the special annexation election, determining validity of prior proceedings and directing recording of, uh, amended notice of special tax lien, City of Riverbank Community Facilities District number twenty sixteen dash one, Public Services Annexation Number One.
Thank you very much, Mayor. We are going to go to our special consultant Samantha with Willdan, who is going to give a report this evening on the CFD, uh, election and annexation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Samantha LaVitin and I am with Willdan Financial Services. I'm also accompanied by my project manager, Susanna Hernandez, who is also in attendance tonight. Um, I have been with Willdan for a few years, but this is my first time presenting to council. So please bear with me and if you need to interrupt me for any reason with any questions or to tell me to slow down, please feel free to do so. Um, so we have been working with the city in regards to their Community Facilities District number two thousand sixteen dash one. And this is for the proposed annexation number one. So as an overview, um, in nineteen seventy-eight, Californians enacted Proposition thirteen. This limited many local public agencies and their ability to finance new projects. In nineteen eighty-two, the Community Facilities Act authorized local governments to create CFDs. And this was for the purpose of collecting special purpose taxes and selling tax exempt bonds to fund those public improvements. So by resolution two sixteen dash twenty-eight, the city council established CFD two thousand sixteen dash one. And this is a CFD with the intention that future development within the city would annex into this district. So the purpose of this CFD is to mitigate impact of new development and to maintain current levels of service. And this includes service on police services, parks maintenance, streets maintenance, drainage maintenance, and landscaping maintenance. This slide is the current CFD boundaries. And this is a collection of, um, developed land, undeveloped land, and land that is, uh, under construction. So there's, the next two slides is the proposed boundary for the annexation. The first one is for the countryside phase three development. And this next folded area is for the Crossroads West development. The resolution of intention was adopted on July twenty-seventh of this year. And that was the first step in the process of annexing the new developments into the CFD. And it also set the public hearing for tonight, September fourteenth. So after that ballots and consent and waiver forms were mailed to the landowners within this proposed annexation area. So tonight, the city council shall hold a public hearing and allow any interested parties to be heard on matters related to this proposed CFD annexation. Um, and it is recommended that the city council shall adopt the resolution, annexing the territories into the CFD and authorizing the levy of the special tax. So at this time, I will hold my presentation and the council may discuss and consider the proposed annexation and hold the public hearing.
Thank you. Before we go to public hearing, is there any clarification needed by any of the council members? Saying none at this time and place for the public hearing relating to Community Facilities District number twenty sixteen dash one, Public Services Annexation Number One. This public hearing relates to the proposed annexation of territories to, to the district and calling a special election and submitting to the qualified electors of said district proposition regarding the annual levy of special taxes within the Community Facilities District.
Notice of the public hearing has been given in the form and manner as required by law.
Am I allowed to proceed forward?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, to take testimony from the public, I would request that each person who speaks give their name and address and state whether he is the owner of the property located within the proposed annexation boundaries or registered voter residing within, uh, proposed boundaries such as territory to be annexed to the district. I now open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak at this time?
Mayor, there is no one online who wishes to speak on this item.
I would now ask the staff to provide the final protest count of registered voters and owners, if any.
Samantha, at this time, would I be opening the ballots?
Um, no, not yet. So I believe that the, the, there were less than twelve registered voters, so this will be a landowner election. So this is Susanna Hernandez from Willdan. At this time, um, you could close the public hearing and you could adopt the, the, uh, first resolution. That's on the agenda for this item.
So before I close the public hearing, are you stating that there is no landowner, um, communication?
Um, sorry, I don't know what you mean by landowner communication.
Well, you said that this is landowners only. And if so, we have ballots to open or any landowners?
Yes, so the ballots will be opened, um, during the special election, but for the public hearing, this is just to adopt the resolution that is annexing the territory. And then after that, we will proceed with the special election.
Thank you. Before I formally close the hearing, are there any other property owners subject to the proposed special taxes who wish to file written protests? If so, they must file within, uh, with the city clerk at this time.
Mayor, just a reminder, there's about a eight minute delay on cable and about forty minute delay on YouTube. Forty audio. Forty, forty seconds.
Forty seconds, okay.
There is currently no attendees online who wishing to speak.
Okay.
There were no written comments received in protest.
The public hearing is hereby closed. Okay, uh, for the city council, resolution of the city council for the City of Riverbank annexing of territories to the Community Facility District, authorizing the levy of special tax and submitting levy of tax to qualified electors, City of Riverbank Community Facilities District number twenty sixteen dash one, Public Services Annexation Number One. I need a motion on that?
I make a motion that we approve, uh, the resolution of the city council. Um, that will be a amended notice of special tax lien for Facilities District number twenty sixteen dash one, Public Services Annexation Number One.
I'll second it.
Here we have a motion, uh, to, um, uh, by council member Barbara Martinez and a second on the Communities Facilities District twenty sixteen one, Public Service Annexation Number One. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member Hernandez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Chair Uribi?
Yes.
Excuse me, Vice Mayor Chair. Mayor Chair O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, for item.
So with the adoption of this resolution, um, we would proceed with the special election.
Okay.
So the city clerk did receive, sorry. So the city clerk did receive consent from a hundred percent of the landowners, um, within the territory to shorten the timeframe of the annexation. And this allows the election to be conducted the same day as the public hearing tonight. So the results of the election authorizing the levy of the special tax within the territory should be, shall be declared. If there is a two-thirds majority vote in favor of the ballot measure, um, the city council shall adopt a resolution declaring election, declaring the election results and directing the recording of the amended notice of special tax lien. Each landowner was allowed one vote per acre or portion of an acre and owned within the, the proposed annexation territory. Below is a table of the owners and the acreage and their votes allotted. This slide is the ballot measure that was on the ballots mailed to the property owners. This measure basically states that shall the city, by and forth, CFD, um, be authorized to levy special taxes within the territory annexed to the CFD pursuant to and as described by the resolution of intention, um, of the City of Riverbank adopted by its council on July twenty-seventh. And the land, the property owners would vote on this ballot measure. This slide is the maximum, maximum special tax rate for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. This is the, there is an annual escalation factor each year. Basically, this means the greater of two percent or the annual percentage increase in the CPI. And if the ballot measure was to be approved, this is the maximum special tax rate as of fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. So at this time, I'll stop and the, the city clerk or I apologize, the election official, um, may open the ballots and I can help tally the votes as she's opening the ballots.
Thank you, Samantha, I'll go ahead and do that now. This first vote was submitted by the authorized representative of Randy High for the Machado property. And the vote is yes. The second, the, um, ballot was from Christian Herrigfield. And the vote is yes.
Thank you.
Third ballot was from McRoy Wilbur Communities. And the vote is yes. This next ballot is for the Herrigfield Jackson Family Trust. And the vote is yes. The next ballot is from DMG Development. And the vote is yes. This next vote is from Leslie Berquist. And the vote is yes. The next ballot is from the Herrigfield Family Trust. And the vote is yes. And the last ballot is from Karna Herrigfield. And the vote is yes.
Okay, thank you. So there was a hundred percent voter approval rate for the vote, the ballot measure. And it's needed a two-thirds minimum vote in favor of the ballot measure, um, to pass. So the property owners of the annex parcels will be required to pay annual special taxes as itemized on their property tax bill. At this time, the council may adopt the resolution declaring the results of the special election and directing the recording of the amended notice of special tax lien. The election official may also execute the canvas of election result, return, sorry.
At this time, for the city council, uh, it is time to, uh, adopt a resolution of the city council of the City of Riverbank declaring results of the special annexation election, determining validity of prior proceedings and directing recording of the amended notice of special tax lien, City of Riverbank Community Facilities District number twenty sixteen dash one, Public Services Annexation Number One. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion that we accept the, uh, the stated idea?
We, yeah, we're adopting a resolution.
Yeah, but the resolution, yeah, that's what I meant. I'll second it.
Hey, we have a motion to, uh, adopt the resolution of the special tax for the Facilities District twenty sixteen dash one and a second. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Members Hernandez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Uribi?
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. We now move to item ten point two. First reading by title only introduction of a proposed ordinance approving the rezone of four point six plus or minus acres to planned development located at forty-one thirty-one Kentucky Avenue, APN zero six two dash zero two two dash zero two zero, a project known as Countryside Three. And a resolution approving vesting tentative map zero three dash twenty twenty-four, McRoy Wilbur Communities located at forty-one thirty-one Kentucky Avenue, APN six two dash zero two two dash two zero, a project known as Countryside Three.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Our associate planner, uh, Gabriel Salazar is going to give this report. He's been the project planner on, um, both projects this evening, so he's going to step you through the, the details. Your PowerPoint's loading, one moment.
Okay. Good evening, uh, Mayor, City Council, staff and the public. Yes, this item before you is for Countryside Three, which is a rezone to planned development and vesting, vesting tentative map approval. And it's located on four point five six acres. Um, it's for a planned development. It will consist of twenty-two single family units and three lots for an interim store and drain basin along with internal streets. And before you is the assessor's map indicating where the project site is located. It's located on northwest corner of Central Avenue and Kentucky Avenue on the eastern side of, um, the city riverbank. And before you is an aerial view of the subject property. As you can see there, it's, uh, located on the, sorry, northwest corner of Kentucky and Central Avenue. Um, adjacent to it is the future proposed Countryside Two, which would be for forty units, uh, single family to the north. Uh, to the west is, um, Riverbank Enclave, which is an eighteen unit single family subdivision. And to the east and south, um, it consists of, uh, undeveloped, uh, pa- pa- pasture land and ranchettes. And this is kind of going to give you a brief, um, recap of previous project approvals. On August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, the planning commission approved, um, a resolution to recommend that the city council approve the rezone for, um, the subject property, which is of, as I mentioned earlier, four point five six acres from R one single family to PD planned development, which would allow for five thousand square foot lots with amenities. The amenities that the developer is providing is, um, or are upgraded garage doors, decorative outdoor lighting, and enhanced landscaping. The amenities that the developer is providing is, or are upgraded garage doors, decorative outdoor lighting and enhanced landscaping. Along with that project, that approval by the planning commission or all recommendation, on August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, the planning commission also adopted a resolution recommending approval of vesting tentative map oh three twenty twenty. And that same evening, the planning commission also adopted another resolution to approve the architecture site plan review oh five twenty twenty-one for the Countryside Three, which is for the architecture and site plan review of the elevations, the architecture for the proposed subdivision. And before you is the vesting tentative map. It will consist of two cul-de-sacs. Entrance and exit will be off of Kentucky Avenue. The developer will make public improvements to the north side of Kentucky Avenue and on the western side of Central Avenue. And as you can see there, the zoning for this property is R one single-family. Adjacent and surrounding properties are also R one single-family. And the general plan designation's lower density residential. In order for the developer and the applicant to ask for a rezone, staff must make a rezone findings to show that the reasoning for the rezone and that it complies with the findings. Number one, each individual unit of the development may be built in stages and can exist as an independent unit. A second finding was that the uses proposed will not be detrimental to the present and proposed surrounding land uses. As you can see from the aerial, there are two subdivisions adjacent to this project or proposed in the future. A third rezone finding is that any deviation from the standard requirements is warranted by unusual design and additional amenities incorporated in the development plan. As mentioned earlier, there are amenities that are provided from the developer for this project. And then a fourth rezone finding is that the principles incorporated in the proposed plans identify unique characteristics which cannot otherwise be achieved under other zoning districts. Additionally, along with the rezone findings, staff and the city must make vesting, vesting tentative map findings as well. And the first one we have is the proposed map is consistent with the applicable, applicable general and specific plans. A second finding is that the design or improvement of the proposed subdivision is consistent with applicable general and specific plans. A third vesting tentative map finding is that the site is physically suitable for the type of development. For the site is, the site is physically suitable for the proposed density of the development. And then the last one, number five, that the design of the subdivision or the proposed improvements is not likely to cause substantial environmental damage, et cetera. And then along with making the vesting tentative map findings, staff and the city must show how the proposed subdivision is consistent with the general plan. And here are four different elements incorporated here in terms of consistency. The first part is policy design two point four, which the city will require construction of intersections with the minimum dimensions and turning radiate necessary to maintain established levels of service. Number two, policy design two point five, the city will require visually attractive street skips with street trees and sidewalks on both sides of the streets, planting strips, attractive transit shelters, benches and pedestrian scale streetlights in appropriate locations. A third is policy design three point five, the city will ensure that smaller residential lots, including those with lists, less, widths of less than approximately fifty feet shall minimize driveway widths and set, set garages back from the home structure and minimize garage widths. Number four, conservation eight point six, the city will encourage compact development to achieve more efficient use of resources and provision of public facilities and services. And as you know, this, this, these, the subdivision brings much-needed homes to the City of Riverbank. Another element that the planning commission approved was the architecture. The developer, McRoy Wilbur, is proposing five models, three architectural styles, which are Americano, farmhouse, cottage and craftsman. I guess that's four. Sorry about that. There's twelve color schemes. And this project will be consistent with Countryside One and Countryside Two, which, about the property to the north. And then here's an example of one of the plans for the project. As you can see here, the different elevations, this is for the seventeen, seven, seven hundred forty-two square foot floor plan, which is a fi- three-bedroom bath with two, three-bedroom, two-bath, along with a two-car garage. And then the second plan is for the eighteen sixty-eight square foot floor plan, which is for three bedrooms and three baths. It will also have a two-car garage. And then the third plan is for the twenty-one hundred and five square foot floor plan, which will be for four bedrooms, two and a half baths and also a two-car garage. And then the next one, which is the last one that we're providing as an example, is Plan Four. And this is for the two thousand one hundred eighteen square foot floor plan, which is for a four-bedroom, three-bath, two-car garage as well. And these are the larger models for this planned subdivision. And regarding the environmental analysis, the proposed project is exempt from additional analysis pursuant to Sequoia Guideline Section two eleven five nine point two one parentheses A through J, exemption from qualified housing projects. And then staff recommends that the city council approve ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash TBD to be determined for the rezone based on the project complying with the required findings for a rezone. And also approve resolution number twenty twenty-one dash TBD for the vesting tentative map based on the map being conformity with the provisions of the subdivision law and city code. And that concludes the presentation. Staff is here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Before I have you guys ask questions, we have two actions to do for this one item. The first one is to approve the, the rezone. And the second is to approve a resolution for vesting tentative map. Are there any questions before I open it up for a public hearing? Okay, saying none. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. And there's a forty-minute delay?
Forty seconds.
Okay.
Mayor, there is no one online wishing to speak.
Thank you. I'll wait the forty seconds, or so. All right, I close the public hearing. I bring it back to, to the council for consideration. The first reading by title only, only an introduction of a proposed ordinance approving the rezone of four point six plus or minus acres to planned development located at forty one thirty one Kentucky Avenue.
I make a motion that we approve item ten point two, the first reading by title only. And this would be for project known as Countryside Three and approving the rezone.
A second.
We have a motion to approve the first reading by council member Barbara Martinez and a second by council member Hernandez. Roll call, please.
Council authority member Hernandez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Second half, a resolution approving vesting tentative map zero three dash twenty twenty-four McRoy Wilbur Communities located at forty one thirty one Kentucky Avenue, a project known as Countryside Three. I'll make a motion that we approve that resolution.
And I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve in a second on the resolution. Roll call, please.
Council authority member Hernandez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Item ten point three, first reading by title only an introduction of a proposed ordinance approving the rezone of five point nine plus or minus acres to planned development located at sixty-four forty-eight Claus Road APN zero six two dash two zero dash zero zero one, a project known as the Heritage Collection. And a resolution approving tentative map zero one dash twenty twenty-one for SCM Hearthstone LLC located at sixty-four forty-eight Claus Road APN zero six two dash zero two zero dash zero zero one, a project known as the Heritage Collection.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a, a pretty interesting project. This property has been proposed, has had projects proposed on it for many years, a number of times, and only recently did the property owners put something together that they're ready to move forward with. So we're excited to see it happen. It's located immediately south of Diamond Bar East on the corner of Patterson and Claus, just so everybody can kind of get the idea. Once again, Gabe has been the project planner on this and is going to step you through the particulars of the planned development.
All right, Gabe.
Hello again, Mayor, City Council, staff, public. Yes, this, this item concerns the Heritage Collection at Sierra Street, which is for a rezone to a planned development and a tentative map approval. The planning commission on August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one recommended the rezone for the planned development for this project. They also recommended approval of tentative map, which is for forty-seven single-family units on a, I believe it's five point nine acre. Well, they're requesting to subdivide, SEM Hearthstone LLC is requesting to subdivide a twelve point two seven acre lot to forty-seven single-family unit subdivision with the remainder lot for a future self-storage to the west of this property. But this forty-seven lot, single-family subdivision will be on about forty, five point nine acres of the subject site. And the project is located on the east of Claus Road, as Sean mentioned, south of Diamond Bar. And it's south of Sierra Street, to the west of Central Avenue. It's also north of the railroad tracks right there along Patterson Road and, which is north of the high school. And the aerial will provide a better visual of what I just mentioned. There you can see the project site. I left, there's a little gap to the left of it because that's the proposed future self-storage site on that subject property. And to provide some background, the planning commission, as Sean mentioned, if this project's gone through, or this site's gone to several iterations for development. On March fifteenth, two thousand and five, the planning commission approved a conditional use permit to allow for one hundred thirty-nine single-family residential lots and the remainder lot. And then subsequent to that, on June thirteenth, two thousand and five, the city council approved a vesting tentative map oh one two dash two thousand and five. The council requested a ten thousand dollar payment for a downtown fund due to the rezone of the property from commercial to residential at that time. And then on June thirteenth, two thousand and eight, the vesting tentative map expired. That was due to the economic recession, recession. It was difficult for the developer to get enough financing for that project at that time. And then up until, in last month, is the latest action regarding this property from the city. And there, the planning, planning commission on August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, adopted a resolution to recommend approval of the rezone to planned development. And then also, as I mentioned, recommended, adopted a resolution to recommend approval of the tentative map for the forty-seven units on the five point nine acre piece of the property. And then as well, in the same meeting, the planning commission also adopted resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh one seven, approving architecture site plan review for the Heritage Collection. And now you will see the proposed tentative map for the subject site. As you can see, access will be on Sierra and Central. And there will be a cul-de-sac in the middle of the subject site. These lots range in size from about approximately thirty-seven hundred square feet to about sixty-nine hundred square feet. And then the next slide will show the existing zone for the property. It's a C two general commercial. And with the proposed zoning for the property, we'll make it a planned development, which will be similar to the zoning of the properties to the north, which are residential subdivisions. Or residential subdivision, I'm sorry. The next slide will show the general plan designation. The general plan designation notes a medium-density residential, which allows for higher intensity residential for that subject site. And then similar to the previous item of Countryside Three, staff was make rezone findings for this project. Number one, each individual unit of the development may be built in stages and can exist as an independent unit. A second rezone finding is that the uses proposed will not be detrimental to the present and proposed surrounding land uses. A third rezone finding is that any deviation from the standard requirements is warranted by unusual design and additional amenities incorporated in the development plan. Again, here in this case, the developer will provide amenities for this subdivision. Number four, the principles incorporated in the proposed plans identify unique characteristics which cannot otherwise be achieved under other zoning districts. Also, staff was also like, as I mentioned, must make findings for the tentative map for the subdivision. And the first one is that the proposed map is consistent with applicable, general and specific plans. The second finding is that the design or improvement of the proposed subdivisions is consistent with the applicable, applicable, general and specific plans. And then a third tentative map finding is that the site is physically suitable for the type of development. And then the fourth is that the site is physically suitable for the proposed density of the development. And then number five is that the design of the subdivision or the proposed improvements are not, is not likely to cause substantial environmental damage. And then again, similar to the previous project where a rezone findings, rezone findings are necessary along with tentative map findings, staff was, must also demonstrate that the project is consistent with the general plan. The first policy design section that was used on the general plan is two point seven, which is in general, the city will require the construction of sidewalks on both sides of all new streets. A second general plan consistency is that, consistent with policy design section three point one, the city will limit block lengths and encourage continuity of streets among neighborhoods to facility access, increase connectivity and support safe pedestrian, bicyclist and vehicle movements in residential neighborhoods. A third general plan consistency is out of three point two, where approved plans, projects and subdivision requests shall provide residential site and building design that contributes to an attractive pedestrian-friendly environment along neighborhood streets. And then a fourth general plan consistency is out of four point two, where approved projects, plans and subdivisions shall provide for collection, conveyance, treatment, detention and other stormwater management measures in a way that does not decrease water quality or alter hydrology in the St. Louis River or associated groundwater recharging areas. And then, as I mentioned, the planning commission did approve the architecture site plan review, which for this proposed subdivision of forty-seven single-family units, consists of four types of models, two architectural styles, which are craftsman and cottage, six color schemes. And then here in the first slide of the architectural conceptual renderings, you'll see the cottage. And there you can see the various elements of these elevations of the cottage design. They'll provide garage doors, as I mentioned, I'm sorry, garage lights, outdoor lighting. Some variety there in terms of the homes that you'll see in the subdivision. The second plan. The second plan, um, or the second plan of the craftsman, um, is that, um, similar, but then this is more the craftsman type, where you have more, uh, triangular, uh, um, rooftops. And then you can see the roofing material there as well. And then the next slide, you'll see, um, the second plan for the cottage type of, um, model. Well, this would be two stories with trimming on the windows. Okay, and then the next slide, you'll see the third plan, and this is for the craftsman. And these are the more, uh, larger-sized, um, units for the subdivision. And that concludes the architectural, uh, conceptual renderings, um, for this slideshow. Regarding the environmental analysis, the proposed project is exempt from additional analysis pursuant to Sequoia Guideline Section two-one-one-five-nine-point-two-one parentheses A through J, exemption from qualified housing projects. And staff recommends approval of Orders twenty-twenty-one dash TBD for the rezon TBD, PD, based on the project complying with the required findings for a rezon, and approved Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash TBD for the tentative map based on a map being in conformity with the provisions of the subdivision law and city code. And this is all for, uh, the first reading regarding for this, this project. And staff is also here to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, are there any questions?
Yeah, I have a question about the larger homes that you just showed. Do we know how many bedrooms, baths are in those homes?
Let me take a look, let's see.
If you don't, you, you don't have to waste time. We can, you know, get back to me later.
Yes, sorry about that. Um, I could definitely, uh, forward you the, um, information on the, um,
That's fine.
The square footage and the, the rooms. I don't wanna speak out of turn and say.
That's okay. Thank you. Um, and looking at both, um, the, this one and also the last one, there's no parks that they mentioned. And I was just wondering, you know, it talks about pedestrian sidewalks, uh, walkways and that kinda stuff, but just so the public understands that there's maybe a reason why parks are not included.
Thank you, Councilmember, uh, Martinez for that, um,
Okay.
Mar, for the Barbara Martinez for this question. Um, regarding this, basically, the park sites or the subdivision is not large enough to require a new park, but the project still requires that the, um, developer pay into a, um, park-in-lu, uh, fee. And for this heritage, um, project, um, each unit is required to pay, um, a thousand-one-hundred-forty dollars per unit, which would go into a park fund, which I believe in the future could be used for creating new parks or, um, improving, uh, future proposed parks in the city of Riverbank.
Thank you. I just think the public needed to know, in case they were having the same question that I did. Thank you.
And I'd add one more thing. So, um, one thing that's not showed on the map is Diamond Bar West, which is not built yet, but mapped. It's a fairly large project, just literally right to the west of this, uh, project, and they have a fairly large, uh, dual-use park, uh, proposed. And so one of the ideas staff has sort of, uh, discussed internally is using some of those park-in-lu fees, similar to what you did with the countryside park, where you upgrade it so that the park is, uh, more than a basic park. It has extra amenities, better bathrooms, better gazebos, what, whatever the council would like to see. So that's one idea we had.
Thank you.
In addition, Councilmember Barbara Martinez, um, the item before this one was for countryside phase-three. Phase-one, actually, of that subdivision does include a park, um, and that's currently in the process of being worked on.
Very good. Thank you.
And this project also has no, um, stormwater basin, which is gonna be used by the oversize for, uh, Diamond Bar.
Correct.
I was just stating it. Didn't have to say it. It's correct. Any other questions? All right, I'm gonna open it for a public hearing.
There is no one online wishing to speak at this moment, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna close public hearing, bring it back to the council.
Uh, Mayor, one, uh, thing I wanna mention that you, you made me remember is, this project also will be paying storm-in-lu fees, or, excuse me, storm system development fees, which are going towards the regional solution that you and the rest of the council have discussed for many years on the east side, which will be in Diamond Bar.
Thank you. Good. All right, I'll bring it back to the council, um, for two considerations. Uh, the first, uh, for the proposed ordinance approving the rezone of five-point-nine acres for the project known as Heritage Collection.
So I'll make a motion to approve item ten point three, the proposed ordinance approving the rezone of a project known as The Heritage Collection.
I second.
We have a motion to approve ten-point-three ordinance, uh, by the Vice Mayor and the second by Councilmember Barbara Martinez. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member Hernandez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Uribe?
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
The second item is the resolution approving the tentative map for the project known as Heritage Collection.
I make a motion, we approve the tentative map for Heritage Collection.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Councilmember Barbara Martinez and a second on the resolution approving the tentative map. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member Hernandez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Uribe?
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
New business. Item eleven-point-one, a resolution approving the City of Riverbank, twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-seven strategic plan.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Uh, as council is aware, because you were all there, we, uh, held a planning session on August tenth, um, uh, at our, um, at our teen center. And, um, it was one of the best ones I've been part of in my five years here, uh, just in terms of the discussion, the direction, all very clear and concise, really from all of the council. So what Kendall has done is she's taken all of that information and put it into her magic cauldron and created a new, uh, strategic plan or an updated one based on our, our previous one. And so she's online, um, she was gonna be in person tonight, but ran into some traffic issues. And so she's on Zoom with us and is going to present a brief report on the update and, uh, put it forward for your consideration for approval or amendment.
Uh, thank you so much, Sean. And again, my apologies, uh, Mayor and councilmembers. Um, Caltrans had other plans for me today that I did not anticipate. And I've been in touch with District Four to, uh, discuss how we might make those better in years in the future. Um, and my question to you tonight is really, uh, two-fold. I'm gonna run through this relatively quickly. I believe that you've got the, um, the entire strategic plan in your agenda packages tonight. I just wanna draw your attention to those areas where there are some changes. As you all know, it's pretty much, and thanks as well as all the different staff members, city manager, and all the department heads. Um, obviously, we reviewed the budget. We looked at all these different things. And frankly, your strategic plan really needs just a little bit of a tweak. And really, uh, it, it involved the things that related to homeless services, also to the idea of inclusion and equity, diversity, these sort of things. So your goals remain the same from your twenty-twenty piece. Um, they're pretty much the eight we had that also are in the package tonight. But what I really wanna draw your attention to are some of the things that have changed. In fiscal responsibility, as an example, one of the things that came up was basically looking at the prioritization of discretionary funds, um, based on the goal, but also looking at how you might pay down debt at some point. And this is the percentage that you had at the review, to determine whether or not there are opportunities to, uh, set the city up for a better, um, forward with the, um, potential curse liability it might have. We also did things that you'll notice here that provided specific funding for grant opportunities that look at areas where you might get funding for diversity and equity. And those are things, I think, that several of the councilmembers mentioned that they're, um, extremely interested in as time goes on. When it came to the public safety issue, really the number one thing here was looking at, one, expanding the community resource deputy program. The chief told us that he has enough officers at this point in order to make things work, but there were really questions about making sure that we had the ability to have that resource, uh, deputy program in place. And also looking at options for the availability of mental health providers in the field. And this is something we've seen nationwide, but also something that we've seen, uh, in the City of Riverbank. The other change here relates to, um, looking at public health and natural disasters. Frankly, over the last two years, um, eighteen months or so, we've really seen some very interesting, challenging times as it relates to COVID. That was one of the things the council really wanted to look at, how you're positioning not only to natural disasters, but to help public health issues. Also, in this particular area, there was discussions about reviewing and one of the challenges with that was really finding ways to work collaboratively with public, public utilities, so that they would be, um, proactive and helpful in this effort. So the city is kind of constrained in some ways by what the utilities will do, but the strategic plan really does emphasize the idea of collaborating with those folks to make sure that things work better. The other piece in this, which I think was, um, sort of universal, especially given the fact we've seen all the wildfires in California over the last two years, which is really looking at ways to proactively eliminate the use of illegal and out there. And rather than mandating a specific one, what the City Council really wanted to do was encourage law enforcement and fire to look at ways to implement, to actually in your downtown area, one of the things that we talked about quite a bit was looking at, I'm gonna say absentee landlords and the ability to enforce existing, um, conditions that are in that area and how you basically make sure that folks are actually, um, completing the requirements that they have. So what we're talking about here is enforcing, um, landlords, or through the compliance, enforcing compliance by landlords through fines or other incentives. And again, this is not meant to be punitive. The idea is that really helping code enforcement be able to proactively improve those areas of the downtown that really, um, the, the council really wanted to see, things that improve the physical beautification, whether that's public art or other things. And of course, one other piece that came up was really asking not only the Chamber of Commerce, but Opportunity Santa Claus, which the city pays for every year, to, um, be more, I'm not gonna say productive, but be more transparent in the way that funds that are given to them, um, are being spent and the benefits that that is giving to the community. And then finally, in this section, we also talked about, as a change, more opportunities for electric charging stations for electric vehicles. You're just now getting ready to move through with, uh, STANCOG, your Regional Transportation Plan and Sustainable Community Strategy. This is certainly one of the areas that the city can actually improve. One of the next sections goes to improving internal and external communications. This was really, uh, the, um, I'm gonna say solidification of what we saw in the twenty-nineteen plan. But one thing that I think was really, um, interesting, and I was very happy to see the council embrace, is working with a youth council that will also include millennials. And that's one of our newest councilmembers', um, uh, ideas, which I think was just so great. And then the idea is to actually also involve youth with the development council and what their when we move into basically encouraging employee development, a lot of those things remain the same. But the biggest thing that came out of the, um, council study session was researching the feasibility of a new city hall to accommodate current and future needs. As many of you are aware, the, um, council and the city went through a, um, study that take, took a look at the various, um, areas that were very to accommodate the city's employees as it exists today. And as we see these need for more employees to meet the needs of your place. So one of the things that came was looking at feasibility of how that might happen and how that might be funded. And that's a task that you, um, basically thought would be great for, uh, for staff to take on. These are a little different than they were last time. At the top of the list for the council was really working with LAFCO, that's the Local Agency Formation Commission, to update the city's sphere of influence. As many folks are aware, there is an ongoing effort for what's called the North County Corridor, and there's other developments that will be happening. And at this point, we have some property that is not moved, and is not, but is still in the county. And I think there's a real commitment by the City of Riverbank to ensure that those properties that would be naturally based on the corridor in the city's sphere of influence, to get those there now. And so that's one of the things that came out of this particular, um, session. And then also, of course, wait, wait, too far. Sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm looking at a new thing here. Um, also, of course, looking at, um, updating the housing element and updating a technical general plan update. And what's different about this, a complete update of the general plan is new sphere of influence and possibly update zoning to reflect the city's needs as it moves forward. Requirement by California state law is the inclusion of an environmental justice element, which makes sure that you're, of course, making everything inclusive for all of the residents. As we go through this, the other part that was really important to the council was continuing to develop the regional waste resources and the treatment plant. And basically, this is one of those big-ticket items that's gonna be very expensive, but it's looking for ways to make sure that that could be funded to completion. Because there's also opportunities to provide water for, um, Riverbank, uh, agriculture, businesses, and residents, and also potentially have the ability to make that be a revenue generator. The seventh one was really looking at, um, economic development. And this is one that was a little interesting. The last time we met, there was really a push to talk about, um, sorry, let me go forward again, uh, to talk about the ability to, um, bring in perhaps an economic development director. But what we've learned is that actually, the ability to cross-train building and community development staff to make them very well-prepared to deal with these issues might be a better choice at this point. And then leaning on the Chamber of Commerce and Opportunity Santa Claus to those other pieces. So that was kind of the idea that was floated out at the workshop. And then the final section, of course, community development. I'm so happy to see a quality of life. I was so happy to see all this stuff with, with the, um, upcoming Riverwalk. This is such an exciting, I'd love that. I can't wait to go. Um, but one of the things that came out of the workshop was really, we have older communities in Riverbank don't benefit by new development. Many, when a new development for housing comes in, they might support par, other amenities that are great for that development. But one of the things the council was really aware of is wanting to make sure that those older and existing neighborhoods were still gonna benefit or still get some sort of, um, notice and frankly, uh, love from a financial standpoint, to make sure that their facilities and their accommodations were actually also good. That was a piece that I think was really important. The other thing that we got of that was and the city's been very proactive and has set up some great opportunities for partnerships with nonprofits and also with the ability to provide transitional housing. And one of the things the council really was specific on was engaging the community and those nonprofits about the way we can figure out programs, facilities, and transitional housing for homeless services. And then look at that possible, a transitional shelter project, which is And then look at that possible transitional shelter project, which is in the works and finding ways to finance that through grants. So these were really, really good forward-thinking issues. And I think the thing that I wanted to leave everybody with is that, again, as a reminder, voters put council in office. The council, of course, figures out these different policies and goals, and then it's up to Sean Scully and his folks, the city manager and staff, to implement and make sure those strategies happen. And then his staff will implement those tactics as things go by. So your options tonight, frankly, are three. Depending on the council's will, you can adopt the plan as it has been presented in your package. You can request changes and/or amendments that can be made and adopt from there. Or you can ask to come back at a later date and review it in total at that point. And with that, I will turn it back over to the mayor.
Thank you, Kendall. I liked your staff report, your executive summary of it. It was a well-put-together report. I appreciate that. I, I'm going to let everyone speak, of course, but I would tentatively adopt what you presented to us. And as we are moving forward with the plan, if we feel that there has to be changes to it, it's a, to us, it's a living document. And who knows what the landscape will be in 18 months from now, what will be our situation? And as we move forward with a lot of the new development and the new commercial sites, we may be in an area where we can change or redirect some of the strategic goals. Counsel?
I like the plan. I think that it recaptured our whole day and our purpose of being there at the meeting. And we had goals that we wanted to reach for that, that day. And I think that she just recaptured everything. So I'm very pleased with it, and I'd like to affirm it.
Yeah, I'm in agreement as well. Yeah, I think you're right, Mayor, Councilmember Barbara Martinez. It is a living document. Kendall, you did a great job. You captured everything, all our goals, our vision for, from now until the future. I don't see any amendments, and I'm in support of it.
I think it's a great plan also. I agree with what the mayor said and council member Martinez and the vice mayor. And what I like, too, we've allowed room that if we need to change it as we go on, we can do that. It's not locked into rocks. And if something changes out there that has to make us change it, we can be able to do that. Good job.
Yeah, I just, I do want to know that it really shows our goals of involving the community and different aspects of the community and the growth for staff and setting it up proactive and forward-thinking way. So I'm excited about it.
Thank you. Any public comment?
There is no one online wishing to speak, Mayor.
All right. I thank you. I bring it back to the council for your consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve item 11.1.
And now a second.
Well, a motion to approve item 11.1, strategic plan from 2020 through 2027, is it? And a second. Roll call, please.
Also, authority member Hernandez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Uriben?
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Kendall, thank you very much. Sorry you're not working with us at StanCOG.
Thank you so much for being a part of this process. It was such a wonderful opportunity to come back with you guys, and I couldn't be prouder of you. You're awesome.
We know that.
You're always so modest, Mr. Mayor, and that's one of the things I love about you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item 11.2, Riverbank Recycled Water Project Planning Studies, Project Status Report and Implementation Steps.
Thank you, Mayor. So no sooner do you approve your strategic plan, do I turn right around and bring you the wastewater treatment plant implementation project. So Neil is online with us this evening, and I think what we'll do for Neil's, because Neil, I think you should be fine, but if we have any connection problems like we did with the last person, I probably will stop you and I'll step through the remainder of yours, and you can just stand up for questions, just so I make sure. Because each one of yours, the council participated in the prior process, so they were fully aware of it. This one is new, and I want to make sure we don't miss anything. But essentially, what's happened is, as council knows, in December of 19, the city was awarded two grants to move forward with a very ambitious recycled water and wastewater project study. And we completed those studies. Those studies have gone to the state. The state notified us just today that they're going to issue approval on those. And the, and so what has happened is that after we received or we found that we were going to likely get that approval soon, Neil and Michael and I met and sat down to talk about, okay, now we have the roadmap for how to complete this. This is a 60-plus million dollar project. Many things need to happen in concurrence to get us to the point where we're turning dirt and hopefully turning on a new plant. And every meeting that we waste after approval of this plan, not setting forward that strategy, is wasted time, which makes it more expensive for the repair. And so he agreed to come tonight and give you his best estimate for what is most important for us to start immediately in some of the implementation steps, and then hopefully get some direction and discussion going with city council so that we can get going on on some of these and report back to you soon. So Neil, I'm going to kick it over to you for your presentation. And all the presentation materials are in your packets, in case you'd like to follow along there.
Thank you, Sean. And I'm tempted to share my screen here, so this works. Good evening, Hubble Mayor, members of the city council. It's my pleasure to present an update on the recycled water planning study this evening. My intent to be there in person this evening, but some personal challenges came up that required me to sign it remotely. So I appreciate that, that ability to do that here. So I'll go through this presentation fairly quickly, because a lot of the information is information that you've seen before, and then really spend probably a little bit more time on the schedule and some of those near-term steps that Sean mentioned in his introduction. Just to give you the brief update on the planning study, as Sean mentioned, we have received an approval letter from the State Water Board for the revised study. The revised study did incorporate the city council's input from your June 8 council meeting. We have a review discussion with the State Water Board this Thursday to go through the one comment. The one comment was asking us to include a no-project alternative, so that'd be very easy and quick to integrate. So at this point, we anticipate no later than mid-October, this project, the reports are going to be done, ready to submit final to the State Water Board, and then, of course, be used by the city as a guide post for project implementation. At this point, we have started the process of preparing technical information for at least two. We have to start with three funding sources, but the two that are the most viable are the State Water Resource Control Board, Division of Finance, through their their loan and grant program. We did have a discussion coordination with the California Program Coordinator for the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation Title 16 program. So we started that process with them as well, and so we'll be proceeding forward with those two elements in terms of technical information. Just to give a brief recap of the project, I won't spend too much time on this slide here, but really four main components. First component is a headworks facility. That's where the wastewater comes into the treatment plant. We have a project there that allows for increased flows and then the two screens to allow for capture and removal of certain products when the wastewater report goes into the rest of the treatment process. On what we call the secondary process, secondary process is the part of the system that removes organic content and can deal with things like nutrients, like nitrogen. And so the recommended approach is to proceed with the, we call the alternative S3, which is an oxidation ditch with circular clarifiers, a very common, robust, well-known, well-used system for facilities this size. After the water goes through the secondary process and is clarified, then it goes on to the tertiary process, and this is where it turns into the highly-treated level for recycled water use. In this case, we're looking at the granular media filtration with UV disinfection as the recommended approach. Again, taking a robust approach here, granular media filtration is very common, very robust in terms of it being able to treat water that comes from the secondary process, and then follow that by UV disinfection. Then from there on to the direct delivery to landowners, we have a phase program on that. So this figure here presents where we are with the interested parties. We essentially have two larger parties that are very interested in receiving recycled water. There's a couple of others that are smaller and in between these two. We're carrying these forward as two alternative approaches. We've scaled the distribution system component back based on city council input from June to get to a more of an edge point of connection, if you will, to these denture grower sites. So very good interest by particularly these two growers that can be part of that process moving forward. Just to recap real quick the benefits of the project. The project, particularly the secondary treatment process, it provides capacity needed to accommodate your planned development. So it's designed to do that, and it's an element that's necessary to provide the treatment for future development consistent with the city's general plan. Under number two, we have included integrated nutrient removal, and that's a process to remove nitrogen that will allow the city to maintain compliance with some recent policy changes in the regional board's documents, they call the base plan regarding nitrate. So that's been integrated into the program. And under three and four, of course, you know that the project, the program supports sustainability, groundwater management, recharge, and then really under number four, sets the city up for a lot of future opportunities that are still developing in our current environment, particularly with the ongoing drought. And so this program really puts the city in a very good position to have alternatives moving forward, even beyond what's in the base project. This table here is what you've seen before, lists the various potential funding sources. I won't go into detail on this, just to know that we are looking at these alternatives. At the bottom there, the other state funding, either other state or federal legislative funding, that's one item that you may want to consider. I'll go into a recommendation on that here in a second. In this slide here, this is just a recap updated numbers regarding the project costs under three funding scenarios, depending on how much grant funding may be, maybe a pain from some of those sources. And this gives you a snapshot of what the cost might be from really an O and M perspective. And then under a debt instrument process, what the debt service may be for the project as we presented it, that's $65 million. So anywhere from a little bit less, a little bit more than $3 million to about $3.8 million per year of debt service. So some next steps here. As the funding process moves forward, there's still some opportunity for confirming and redefining or refining the scale of the project if needed. I would anticipate that would happen in conjunction with the city considering funding sources. And ultimately, really two of the funding sources that the city has, typical funding sources, the city would have for a project like this would be your capacity charges. And capacity charges are charges on new development for the capacity of facilities, in this case wastewater facilities, so those come into play when new development is constructed. And then sewer rates, an update to sewer rates that may be necessary to provide for financial backing of debt financing of this project. As these steps move forward, then, within that same timeframe, if the city's looking at reviewing its capacity charges, its sewer rates towards completing applications for financing, then environmental documentation would be necessary as well. Anticipate that this project may be subject to an initial study mitigated negative declaration or could possibly trigger going into POIIR. That'd be an element to determine here for soon. These efforts then do come together to support complete applications for the project financial assistance. And then I'll go into the schedule here just a little bit. But under number five, for those non-traditional sources of funds, the consideration the city may want to take on is engaging a special consultant that may be able to work with your state and federal representatives on some of these other sources of funding that are being discussed at both state and federal levels under various programs and see if those can be tapped into in addition to the more typical traditional sources that we've listed before. Moving this forward, as you get closer to the point of really moving into design, you get to a point of selecting a design consultant and proceeding into the detailed design as well. So that would be a step, probably one of the biggest steps then towards implementation before you get into construction. So this slide overall shows an updated schedule. The project funding line there is probably certainly the longest near term and has the most uncertainty to it regarding the timeframe and response agencies to provide funding. What we'd anticipate is a program to submit applications, initial applications, technical information, early part of 2022, and then proceed with some of the financial environmental backing towards June's Eli timeframe to make those applications complete. In this case here, a timeframe for review and approval, we would assume a June 2023 timeframe for initial funding that would allow for design to proceed. We have the special consultant lobbying in there as well to see what other funds can maybe be able to come into play. And then below that, the preliminary design, the project scope refinement, which may be something that would happen concurrent with the rate study effort and environmental as needed. And then the rest of the tasks there, you can see in terms of design selection, design consult selection, user agreements for the on-farm improvements that come into play during 2022, and ultimately, a process to complete design through 2023 and 2024 and to start construction in the 2024 timeframe. So just in summary here, then, where we are with the process is continuing to develop the technical information to support the financial system application documents, but then there's some steps for the city to consider in terms of rate study, environmental, and others. And then at this point, the project support is pretty strong, so at a political level, maybe there's some opportunity there as well. So at this point, again, just went through real quick, this is a summary here. If there's any questions, be happy to answer those.
For the council, any questions, Neil?
I have a question. One question that I have, because we've had this in the past, we've had another water project going for quite some time that didn't work out the way it should have. And so I want to know, I see it's in about a four and a half, five-year frame for the time to get this completed. Do you think you can do that in that time?
The biggest uncertainty is the financing. You can see here, we've, this changes from monthly to quarters here in 2024. So the financing element here is really what drives. So the, the financing element here is really what drives. Um, and, um, I think, you know, being diligent, pushing with the, the funding agencies entities on a consistent basis is really the only strategy to try and keep this within this, this scheduled timeframe. The other technical elements, environmental elements, um, I don't see any challenges or issues with, with those, um, you know, construction. Um, you know, we're not in a very good construction market right now, but this is far enough out there that I would hope that we don't have some of the supply chain issues that we're seeing in projects right now.
And another part of my question is, if we allot so much, but say that, uh, the economy really goes crazy and things get really double or triple and the costs increase, uh, are we going to be able to find ways to handle this? You know, as economy, we're, we're not sure what the economy may do, just a thought for you to take into mind. And, uh, my last, uh, thing I want to ask is, I would like, uh, you know, some guarantees from you that it's going to work because we, of some past situations that we've had with some projects. So those are my only questions.
I'm going to answer, uh, the last one. Uh, this is totally different project. There is, um, tried and proven systems identical to, uh, on the already in operation. Uh, for the financing, I know Neil, you're concerned about that, but right now with, if we have a shovel-ready project, funding is available out there through the, oh, $1.2 trillion stimulus, not stimulus, uh, can, um, infrastructure bill, which targets these type of programs. And so that funding is available. Uh, I do like the way, uh, you mentioned the, uh, the lobbyist being able to take our project and direct it to the right desk and get the right monies. There's also other ways that, uh, we could phase in some of the pro, uh, project's cost. One of it, I believe, is 16.5 million dollars for, uh, delivering to agriculture. Well, that could be delayed and, and, uh, find ways from agriculture to pay for that instead of us paying for that. So that reduces your costs down in that, that region right there. So, and, and we can phase construct so we have less burdens. The economy is going to do what the economy does. Uh, but right now, the, the, the construction money are out there. The state has, uh, 800 million available for projects like this, and they can fund up to 25 to 40% of your project. So consider that. And then in the long term, uh, what is just your construction cost plus your operational cost and compare that to what their, what current costs are. So that's what your rate study is going to do.
Correct. Yeah, the ma- mayor is correct. And in, in the, a strategy to, to, um, address or account for, um, market fluctuations is to, to address the, the scope of this for certain improvements. So the, the, um, recycled water distribution component could be put off for a year or more. Um, the headworks component could be put off for a year or more as well. Um, the secondary process, which is the biggest component, that one is a, that's almost an all-in or, or, uh, because that was hard to, um, hard to, to scale. Um, tertiary even could be something that, that could be, uh, could be, could be phased as well. So, so some of those, those would be strategies if, if we did see continued issues or, or increased issues with, um, uh, you know, construction supply chain elements, which really all projects are, are starting to have some concerns with right now. Um, those, those, uh, those are some strategies that would be employed. Um, with respect to the process, again, as I mentioned, the, the processes that we're recommending for design here are very tried and true processes. There are dozens of plants that use exactly those types of processes, oxidation ditch, um, the granular media filtration, dozens of facilities that they're at the same scale of one to two million gallons per day treating, uh, municipal wastewater that have, that have been very, very successful and economically implemented. So I'm, I'm confident that this, the process selection is, is correct for, for the city.
Go ahead, Michael.
So, uh, Councilman Campbell, to, to address your question, when it comes to that and guarantees, I can literally give you my word that this particular type of treatment plant, when they get finished with it, once it gets designed and built, uh, the process will be state-of-the-art for this time, right? And this treatment plant will carry us 20, 25 years to the future easily.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
Right? So, and you can take that for what it's worth, but.
Give us duration.
Question, are there any other projects in our region like this or similar?
There's one. Treatment plants?
Yeah.
There, there are, go ahead, go ahead, Mike. There's one in Tooluma, right next to a golf course that I was just at, and it's very nice. I mean, uh, when, um, we went by it, I go, boy, that's, what is that? And my brother-in-law who did, um, wastewater treatment, uh, told me, explained the, the whole process, and it's the one that we're, uh, exploring right now. So we can probably get a tour if you want a tour.
Yeah.
I would like one.
Okay.
Yes.
Hey Neil, Vice Mayor Uribe here. So no question, just, just a comment, looking at the implementation schedule here. So clearly there's a lot of moving parts here. So thank you for taking the time to kind of break this all down where it kind of makes, you know, it's already a, uh, a complicated project. So thank you for, uh, taking the time for, uh, to do this. And the, and I agree, the biggest concern is the financing. Uh, the mayor's right. I think, uh, looking into a special consultant to seek out those state and federal grants makes a lot of sense. Uh, the more, the more grants we can achieve, uh, the less of a burden it's going to be for our community. Uh, so I, I, I really think we need to consider that. Um, the other recommendations, I see no issues with, and, uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Michael? No? Okay. Uh, just, um, to move on, Neil, I want to thank you for all you've done. I know that, um, there are, may be concerns by you about doing the actual construction. So Sean, can you explain about what Neil's role will be?
Yeah, so Neil, um, ne- first of all, Neil's firm and Neil are more than capable of, of probably doing all components of this project. With that said, in having conversations with him, he feels that it's probably most appropriate, given that he has been essentially the, the architect of this plan, um, to hit the best value that he can provide us is to work with us as sort of our project coordinator, leading us through all of these various, if you look at the, uh, implementation schedule, there's 10 lines of, of various things that need to get done. And, um, and perhaps farming out the, the actual construction drawings and design to a, to a different firm is a more efficient way to do that. It also provides us a separate opportunity, which is that because Neil has created this, um, uh, plan, he can be essentially our in-house staff, uh, review of anything that's done by anybody else we hire. So we've been talking with Neil, we'll be bringing forward something in the future about keeping, retaining his services for, um, the various other components and sort of keeping this project on. He's taken it to this point, and what we'd like him to do is continue to shepherd it through all of these various other, uh, tasks to get us a little bit closer, um, to, to where we need to be. And I'll, I'll be honest with the city council, this is a tremendous lift. Um, the, the, this project will be paid for by City of Riverbank residents and, and new, new development for, for decades. And, um, so we want to make sure we get it right the first time. And to do that, we need to have, um, Neil's expertise, and then, and it's going to take a lot of mine and Maricela's time just making sure that each little step of along the way, um, we're getting it done correctly because, uh, you know, uh, uh, the mayor and I were speaking about it earlier, every dollar of grant that we get to go towards this project is one less dollar that the rate payers pay for. And so, um, and it, and the other thing that we're really excited about is because this doesn't, isn't just a wastewater treatment plant, I mean, everybody does that. Um, it's a recycled water project. We believe that its attractiveness to, to various granting authorities is going to be uh, different than perhaps other projects they look at. It's not simply serving Riverbank. It serves that purpose, and then it serves the purpose of recharging our water, being sustainable with regard to water, providing water for an important agricultural resource. And all of those things add up to a really attractive project. So, um, so that's kind of the idea is that Neil and KSN stay on as our project managers and, and coordinators here. And, um, when we're, you know, the design alone is, uh, Neil, when we were talking about the other day, what's the estimate for design? It's roughly 10% of project cost typically, right?
Yeah, I think pencil that out. I mean, the design effort itself is, you know, probably it's between a, you know, four to five million dollar effort itself for a $65 million project. That's a big, that's a big chunk of effort.
Right. So we're, so we're going to have to, to, uh, make sure that whoever's doing that is, we're making sure that we're getting the type of product that we need. Um, and this is very complex engineering, and so I'd rather have Neil involved in that. So that's, sorry, man, that was a very long answer, but that's the idea.
No, that's, that's good. And, and we have, um, relationships with the state water board. Michael kicked me towards them, and I was able to, um, expedite some of the monies just to get us where we are right now, and I'll be happy to be a tool again in the future.
I have a question for, um, the council regarding recycled water. I remember going to, I think I was in Denver, and I went to a conference, and they talked about recycled water and it going, it was a special unit where you could recycle water, you know, clean it and go into your home. Have we given any thought about that?
Uh, that essentially is.
I can, I can answer that.
Okay.
Question. Um, the, the state of California is in the process, that, that, that process that you talk about is, that's what we call it, direct potable reuse. And right now, there's not, um, there's not a regulatory framework to allow that to happen in, in California yet, but the state, state is, is, is working through that process. Um, so it would, it would be something that would be out there, you know, five-plus years to even start to consider, consider that. Um, and certainly within California, the, um, there, there's no facilities that do that currently.
Okay. Just curious.
So we're doing it indirectly though, uh, by recharging the aquifer. Toilet-to-tap is not a one that you want to, uh, you'll publish, but, you know, uh, it's, it's, uh, essentially what we're doing by recharging the aquifer. And by that, you can take credit for your recycled water, because in this, in this state, this state will, uh, find ways to, to tax water for every use, and they could be taxing, and then what we have to do is protect ourselves, saying, but wait a minute, we're not using water, we're recycling it, putting it back into the aquifer. And with our tremendous, uh, regional stormwater system we will have, we can claim more putting into the aquifer than we're using. Neil, thank you very much for your effort. Continue on. Um, is there anybody in the public wishing their comment?
At this time, there is nobody online wishing to comment.
Thank you. All right, this was just receiving the report.
Yeah, I think, I think.
Thank you.
Based on your direction, I, I think we understand our direction back to you, and so we'll be coming back with many, many, many items soon.
And Neil, we look forward to working with you as our project, um, manager in the future.
I do, I appreciate it. Okay, have a good evening.
You too, thank you. All right, moving on to item 11-3, direction on League of California Cities. No, it's not that. Direction on California Cities Annual Conference Resolution. There's no longer a league. I was fined $5.
Okay. Uh, Mayor, uh, if it's okay with you, I'd like to go in reverse. Uh, so I'd like to talk about resolution number two first, and then we could talk about resolution number one. Resolution number two, from my perspective, is fairly simple, um, and that is a resolution calling upon the governor and legislature to provide necessary funding for the CPUC to fulfill its obligation to inspect railroad lines to ensure the operators are removing illegal dumping graffiti in homeless encampments that degrade the quality of life and result, uh, uh, and results in increased public safety concerns for communities and neighborhoods that abut the railroad right away. So, um, fairly standard, the Federal Railroad Administration, um, is the overarching authority for all rail lines in, in the, in the country, and they have delegated their authority down to the California Public Utility Commission in California to, to regulate. The CPUC has 41 positions who are essentially, uh, you know, code enforcement type positions that cover 6,000 miles of railway within the state, and that's just simply not enough. Um, and the tools that they're given are limited, and so what the resolution seeks to do is to see if we can, uh, get the legislature to pass legislation to, to seek funding for cities to work on addressing this issue, and also adequately fund, um, those positions at the CPUC to, to get enough response. And, you know, Riverbank in some senses has been fortunate in comparison to other communities with regard to this issue. We don't have, we do have code enforcement problems along the railroad right away from time to time, but there are some communities that it's a daily problem, and getting the railroad to address them is very complicated and difficult. Uh, and frankly, we can use our, our contacts at the CPUC, um, but as, as the resolution notes, there's, there's a limited amount of them, and, and they're going to prioritize like everybody else. So, uh, from staff's perspective, this is sort of a no-brainer. Um, this is an issue that, um, from a dumping and graffiti perspective, you know, no one wants to see that. From a homeless encampment perspective, the real problem with that is, is safety. Um, homeless individuals are killed by trains all the time, um, just because of either accident, accidentally walking across the railway. In fact, um, I'll just share one little anecdote. When we did the pit count a couple of years ago, uh, I, um, in fact, our, our risk manager over here to my right wouldn't have been happy about it, but I walked under the viaduct because there was a few people, uh, living up there, and a train came through, and I was really shocked at not only how fast it comes, but just how close it comes to, to the either side of the viaduct. And so I, as I was down there, I could easily see somebody just stepping a little too closely and, and something really serious happening. So, um, anyway, we think that, that this is totally reasonable, and it, you know, any, any tool we can get to address those problems is, is great. Okay. Um, and then for your consideration also is resolution number one, which is quite a bit more complicated. Um, this resolution calls on the state legislature to pass legislation that provides for a fair and equitable distribution of the Bradley Burns 1% local sales tax from in-state online purchases, based on data where products are shipped to, and that rightfully takes into consideration the impacts that fulfillment centers have on host cities, but also provides a fair share to California cities that do not or cannot have a fulfillment center within their jurisdiction. So, um, there's a lot of wordsmithing going on here, and, um, but if you want to distill down the problem to one issue, when you look at the analysis that I attached to your, uh, your agenda, um, basically what it references is that our tax code is very old and it hasn't kept up with the boom of online sales. And there's been discussion for many, many years that we need to address it, we need to adjust it. And it has to happen for a variety of reasons. I suspect one reason is political will, and the other reason is lack of real data. Um, the data with regard to sales tax is scattered amongst many different agencies, and so it's difficult sometimes to know how changing the levers of taxation is going to affect each and every person, uh, or each and every jurisdiction. But in general, for online sales, Bradley Burn's sales tax generally goes to a location other than the one the customer lives. Either to the city or county where an in-state warehouse or fulfillment center is located, the location of in-state sales offices, i.e. their headquarters, or as shared use tax proceeds amongst all local governments within a county, which is known as the county pool, which we receive some money from every year, though it doesn't come, uh, so, for example, if you make a purchase of an item of a microwave, for example, at Target, we know exactly how much of that sales tax comes to us. If you make that same purchase on Amazon, it is very difficult for us to say with any certainty exactly how much of that 1% goes into the county pool that we then receive, and then the, the other portion which goes to Tracy or to, to Patterson, or you name it, a town with a large fulfillment center. So, um, and you can kind of see that the way that the resolution has been structured is, is that, you know, this is a touchy situation because the vast majority of jurisdictions in California do not have a, a fulfillment center, though some do, and there certainly are significant impacts from those, those fulfillment centers, um, running 24/7. Uh, my take on it, as I read through it, is I think gen- Uh, my take on it, as I read through it, is I think generally because the, the resolution, um, is so vague in terms of what it means by equity adjustments, and that's where the devil really lies, is in the detail. What do you mean by equity adjustments? How do you adjust fairly? Assuming that that data could be worked out and reviewed, I think it's something that the council should support. Though, uh, I can't really say that definitively because the resolution has literally no detail to it other than it should take into account equity and also give some fair share to jurisdictions with a fulfillment center. So it doesn't, you know, from that perspective, it doesn't really mean anything. But that's sort of my analysis of it. I, I tried to, I did quite a bit of research trying to come up with how it might affect our numbers based on, you know, extrapolating out what we get from the county pool and making some assumptions. And I just found myself, uh, sort of becoming cross-eyed at the numbers because it's too difficult to determine how much of each, there's so many different online retailers. And this doesn't even take into account, by the way, all of the outstate, outside-of-state retailers. It's a whole nother problem. So, um, I know that probably isn't the, the greatest explanation of, of, of the issue, but frankly, it's, it's about as good as we can provide, given the info we've been given. So that's, those are the two for council consideration to give direction to whoever your voting member was, which is Darlene. Darlene, Darlene just.
On number one, the issue I see with fulfillment centers is that that was a choice by that community for jobs and job growth. Um, and that's what they took on. When, uh, the Supreme Court went and said, you know, you're gonna have to, put a portion of your sales tax to the local communities, uh, that was when this started generating. The, you take a Target, you know exactly where you're gonna go. But they have distribution centers, which are fulfillment centers with a different name. Then they have trucking, which is exactly what Amazon has. All of that is the same. So what has to be done is not try to solve this. They have to resolve how are they distributing the sales tax that the state gets and that the communities get for all of your, uh, your entire chain? Because it affects, uh, the congestion going on the highways and the cities, and then going to purchase it at Target or purchase it, um, online. And I would think if you go by online, uh, we should be getting a heck of a lot more than we're getting because my wife is just spending everything online, honestly. But I think for number one, Darlene, we have to listen to what they're saying. I don't know if, uh, I'll be there with the resolution writing, even though they, it appears like they have a lot of the resolution. I, I right now would support California's doing a study on how to equitably share the sales tax based on online sales because it's totally different than going to the store and buying, uh, a taxable item. Because again, some of those sales tax, uh, won't exist because they're food items.
I can make that suggestion.
Yeah.
From our city.
I think it's a good suggestion.
That, that there be a study based on, um, exactly how it will be distributed.
Isn't that what the resolution is trying to do?
Well, so the resolution, it doesn't specifically state study, but to come up with an equitable distribution. I mean, I, I suspect, uh, Councilmember Barbara Martinez, that what you hear at the general session is, is some comments from other communities that say, well, look, this is great, but there's no detail here. And so come up with some detail. And so that, it may be amended to do exactly what the mayor just said to, you know, fine, we think that there should be an equitable distribution. Now do a study and tell us what.
But I've heard people say at the meetings before, the voting delegates, that, you know, we, we, um, appreciate the, the actual, you know, um, resolution, but we feel like that it should be amended, and here's the reasons why. So I can, I can do that for our city.
Um, and, and I'll just add this. Um, this is always something to look for when you read analysis by the league or anyone else, including me, and I know I've used this term before. Under fiscal impact, it states significant but unknown. The resolution on its own does not shift sales tax revenues. In anticipation and mitigation of impacts, the resolution requests the California cities, uh, to utilize online sales tax data to identify a fair and equitable distribution formula that accounts for everything the mayor, mayor just said. So in essence, I guess that's what they're looking to do.
And that's where Tracy got that extra $24,000 a month. That's because they have that distribution center. Um, and, uh, that's where, what, uh, Tracy probably was holding her head down when we were talking about that.
So I'll, I'll go next. So yes, my understanding on number one is that, that, that was the intention, is to do some type of study, uh, to, to see if there is an equitable way to, 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 to basically update the tax code, because it is outdated. Uh, Sean's right, the county pool, uh, is, is, the way it's distributed is, is questionable. So I think this would be a way to, to, to get the experts to kind of look at this and figure it all out. Um, so I would, I would, I, I would agree with the mayor, just, you know, hear him out. We're gonna get some more information at the Revenue and Taxation Subcommittee tomorrow. Uh, so there, you know, there's still more information out there, you know, there's, you know, other different point of views we can hear. You know, we still got a week out. Uh, so let's hear him out. But if it is a study, I would absolutely be in support of that. Uh, number two, uh, if, if they're giving resources to the cities, absolutely, I'm in favor of that too.
That's the railroad one?
Railroad.
That's gonna give funding not to cities, but to, um, uh, and then increase the number of inspectors?
That, and also provide resources to cities. Doesn't say what that means.
Yeah, the resources will be the code enforcement that you all have to do.
True.
But, you know. And where are the funding coming from for those resources?
From, from our taxes.
Okay. Darlene, do you have any questions on our direction?
No, I don't. I'm good.
Thank you very much.
Do we need to vote on that or no? We're good?
Okay, if there's anyone from the public wishing to comment on what we're gonna do at CalCities? And how many people are going?
Um, I think everybody except Councilmember Campbell to this, this here.
Okay, good.
There is no one online wishing to speak.
Very good. Well, then I bring it back for us to continue with item 12, staff comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, a couple of comments. Uh, first off and foremost, I, I, I share, sense and share the frustrations with Zoom and, uh, the, the policy for this meeting and will be moving forward. This meeting was a little different because we had two unavoidable situations. But, uh, moving forward, unless it's absolutely necessary, we're going to request that consultants and staff present in person, unless they have some special circumstance that I'll, I'll review separately. But, uh, it makes it just very difficult, I think, because there's too many variables on Zoom when we're also simultaneously doing it in-meeting to account for, uh, at the end of the day, you need to hear what they're saying minimally. If you can't do that, then, then it's not an effective, uh, medium. So just want to acknowledge that. Second, um, uh, I have, I was, I was, I'm sure, uh, Councilmember Barbara Martinez and the Vice Mayor will mention this, but I was, uh, fortunate enough to attend a luncheon today with, uh, our homeless population, put on by Thelma, who sort of is an advocate for our homeless. We had a couple of members of Cambridge that came by to sort of meet and greet, uh, our homeless population. We talked a little bit about our program and project. Um, very well received. The community members there in support in particular were, I was really proud to, to be part of. They, they, we had a number of people come up to us and say, I, I really appreciate what the city council has done and the city has done. It's a long time coming. And, um, just a, it's a rarity because sometimes with projects like these, you get the exact opposite. And so it just says something about Riverbank, in my opinion. For next meeting, just as a heads up, we will have, we will have the 100th year, centennial items for your consideration and amendment. Um, and we're ready to move forward on our first couple of events. And also we'll probably bring forward some, the, the process to just establish a logo has been incredibly exhaustive because not everyone agrees on logos and how they look. So we're gonna put some of those forward for you to look at. The, the second one is SiteLogic has prepared, uh, Tom and, and, um, their council have worked through the letter of agreement. We'll have that on, as well as three, four, three or four different financing options for council. Uh, so that project rolls forward. The Jilton contract will be for, uh, to you for consideration. Um, and, um, I just had a, another one that was on, oh, uh, we, Michael, Maricela and I have finally sat down, looked through Maricela's financial, uh, estimates, read through a lot of the, uh, the financials given to us by Enterprise, and we are ready to move forward with a recommendation to, um, have council consider changing out our fleet. So, um, it's a pretty big deal. It's, just really changes the way that we do business. It's a, it's a, it's a big commitment, but we think it's the right decision overall. So we'll have that to you next meeting as well. In addition to a couple more items that are escaping me right now, but, uh, the last meeting's agenda was very heavy. This one was very heavy, and the next couple will probably be similarly heavy, but we're moving things. So, thank you very much.
I can't wait. Okay, um, thank you. Um, Councilmember Hernandez?
Um, I, I do want to note with the resolution regarding railways that I was a little apprehensive that there, I guess it wasn't clear instruction on how homelessness would be addressed. So I know it's complicated, um, but I was curious about that, if it would be left up to the local jurisdictions or if there'd be recommendations in the resolution for that. Um, otherwise, um, Zoom call was frustrating today, but I think, uh, I guess recommending people call on audio for the phone, uh, that's always a good way to do that. Um, and then, um, Love Modesto is doing some fall events. And with Love River Bank, I do want to start establishing a oversight committee. So it's more of a group effort. So I'm gonna invite you all to be on that soon. And there are a couple of interns from Stan State that are gonna be helping lead that. So I'll keep you posted.
Are you gonna do Love River Bank at the same time in October?
No, uh, spring.
Cause that's the, um, achieving one. Yeah, that would be difficult to do. But wait a minute, we're doing a project here. Okay, thank, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Campbell?
Yes, I'd just like to remind everybody that with the climatic changes that we've had, with all the hurricanes, flooding and other disasters, it's time for us to dig in your pockets if you can afford it and help these people out with other associations because they're really hurting. And I got a feeling that we're not over yet. The season's still gonna prolong itself, and I think there's gonna be a few more disasters before it closes down. Likewise too, I would like to give a special thanks to Michael Rydell and his boys at the yard because they helped me out with problems with the fire engine. The starter went out on it, and Josh, the mechanic, looked at it. We couldn't figure out exactly what it was. So we went old school and we cranked it. And you know what? It worked. But boy, it was a job cranking it. And, uh, I really then, I thank your boys, and I appreciate everything they did, Michael. And also, I want to compliment our policeman too, because our sheriff helped me out today over in the parking lot where I had it parked. And again, we had to crank it. And it doesn't always crank on the first crank, guys. It's, it's a little harder than it looks. But I appreciate everything you did to help us out. Thank you.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Um, September is National Preparedness Month. So just like I was talking about our, uh, disasters. So, um, if everyone could remember to make a plan for you and your family so that if any kind of disaster happens, your families and you are, uh, already prepared. Um, I want to give an update on SHAW, which is our Standards Lost Homeless Alliance, which I am the representative for our city. Um, they are working on a funding matrix, which is, uh, one document to show funding sources so they can look at gaps to address what and where additional funding is needed. And, um, El Consilio will be having, uh, COVID testing. And I believe it's every Tuesday from 5 to, I want to say 5 to 7 maybe?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, and then also, um, the Regional Homeless Strategic Plan should be discussed at, um, C- C- Stock, which is Standards Loss of, Standards Loss Community System of Care. And, um, they're gonna be talking about that this week. And the point in time count. Just want to let everybody know that there are new requirements from HUD that are coming down. So we might have to count differently or might be different categories for us, but right now, we just don't know. Uh, there will be more information coming. And then, um, there's a plan, um, that will be presented to C- Stock and that will be for the partnership with United Way, uh, Community Action Partnership. Um, right now, there is a program in Kern County for 211. And this will be looking at coordinated, um, entry services, uh, for our county so that people can receive services much quicker than, than what they're actually receiving right now. Sometimes it takes days. And then also was on a webinar today for Prop 68, which was presented by CalCities. And, um, there's new park funding, round four. There's 542.5 million. All cities are entitled regardless of size. So I have some information for our city, so I'll give that, pass that on to Sean. And I think that's all that I have. Thanks.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll keep mine very brief. Uh, so I look, I'm looking forward to this conference, uh, next week, 9/22 to 9/24. So if there's any residents out there wondering where I'm at, I'm sure there won't be. Uh, but just in case, uh, so I look forward to attending these events, engaging with, uh, our, our vendors, local leaders, uh, and just getting all that knowledge and just bringing it back to the city. Uh, I, I find, and then also just, uh, hanging out with these guys, the council, city staff on a personal level. It's almost rare that we get to do that without, you know, violating Brown Act or anything like that. So I look forward to doing that and hanging out with you guys outside of council meetings. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Um, green ribbons. I was asked why are green ribbons still on trees in, uh, where they put them up in, in private business areas? Uh, if they could, uh, take a look at that, please. We as a council need to come to grips with, uh, a policy for ag land mitigation. So when we're at the conference and there's gonna be some topics on ag land, I think we should come up with some type of a, a program for this city to adopt. But we need to go through the Farm Trust, and, uh, that should be something quite soon because as we move forward with our projects, it's gonna be stopped if we're not there. Just real quick update on the tax sharing agreement. The city managers and the county staff are doing a superb job. Um, and I want to recognize both the, the, uh, the CEO's office, as well as, uh, Sean and, and his group that are doing the discussion. I think we should have some conclusion here shortly to come to us for consideration. And I'd just like us to be aware of all the work that has been going in. It's only been seven years. I think that, uh, Sean, we do need to talk earnestly about an advocate in DC and Sacramento. Uh, that is something that should be sooner than later. As we receive, uh, this is a long way out. If we should happen to receive a, a windfall of funds, we should, uh, determine now how that is going to be used. Uh, one of the ideas could be, uh, we use portions of it to help with debt service. We, we just need to, to have a plan. So when we do get a windfall, um, we use what we can for the, for the intent of that windfall. But anything extra, what do we do? How do we use that? And so we can direct how it's gonna be used in the future, whether we're here or not. Uh, and the last one, I'm looking forward to a new thermostat that can be used to keep this place at a comfortable temperature. Hmm, friction. That's where the heat came from. All right. Uh, we're gonna move into closed session. The public will have a limit of three minutes to comment on all items on the, uh, closed session except for on the agenda coming up. First one is 13-1, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation for. Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code, Section 549, 56.9. Name of case, Carlson Morgan LLC versus City of Riverbank Local Redevelopment Authority. Stanislas County Superior Court, case number CB 21-001556. Item 13.2 Conference of Real Property Negotiator Pursuant to Government Code, Section 549, 56.8. Property APN 132-17-17. Address 3338 Sierra Street, Riverbank. Agency negotiator Sean Scully. Property negotiator Delbert and Gracie Lyle. Under negotiation price term or payment of both. Item 13.3 Conference of Real Property Negotiator Pursuant to Government Code, Section 549, 56.8. Property APN 132-17-13. APN 132-10-14. And 132-10-62. Addresses 6825, 6827, 6813, Third Street, Riverbank. Agency negotiator Sean Scully. Property negotiator Deandra Sorol Patel under negotiation price term of payment or both. Do we have any public comments?
Mayor, there is no one wishing, online wishing to speak.
Thank you very much. We will close for, we will retire for closed session. We can reconvene from closed session. Item fourteen point one, for item thirteen point one, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, direction has been provided to staff. Item fourteen point two on item thirteen point two, conference with real property negotiators, direction has been provided to staff. Item fourteen point three on item thirteen point three, conference with real property negotiators, direction has been provided to staff. The next regular general counsel meeting will be held on Tuesday, September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one at six P M. This meeting is now adjourned. Good evening.